Call to order and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with a revision under discussion and action items to include a resolution to petition the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District for membership?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Review of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 27, 2023, which was a regular select board meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And can I get a motion to approve the March 6, 2023 town meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Board reorganization. Do we have a nomination for Chair and Vice Chair of the Proctor Select Board?
I nominate Judy for Chair.
We have a nomination for select board member Curtis for Judy Fraser to be Chair. Do we have a motion for Vice Chair?
Make a motion that Ben is Vice Chair again this year.
Judy Fraser makes nomination for Ben Curtis as Vice Chair. Any discussion? All right, do we have a motion to appoint Judy Fraser as Chair and Ben Curtis as Vice Chair of the Select Board for a term of one year? Seeking a motion?
I thought we were gonna do it, yeah.
I apologize. Second?
Look.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Madam Chair, me and yours.
Thanks. Just kinda enjoying you doing it.
Yeah.
All right, so we have the appointed officials that we have to make motions for to reappoint or to appoint new ones. So we need a motion to appoint the Select Board to serve as a Water and Sewer Commissioner for a term of one year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Motion to appoint Lisa Wright to serve as the Assessor for a term of one year. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to appoint Don Russell to serve as Constable for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion to appoint Carol Protovansky and Dale Christie to serve on the Planning Commission for a term of four consecutive years. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anybody opposed? Oh, four-year term, that's long.
Mm-hmm.
It's a life sentence.
That's why I thought.
Motion to appoint Brian Canucci to serve on the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term of two consecutive years.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to appoint Kevin Blangi to serve as Emergency Management Chair for a term of one year.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to appoint Mary Fregosi to serve as the Town Representative to the Proctor Free Library for a term of three consecutive years.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to appoint Kerry Covey to serve as the Rutland County Solid Waste District Representative and Kyle Thornton as the Alternative for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Could you see the call during the...
Kyle Thornton. Motion carries. Motion to appoint Michael Ramsey to serve as the RRPC Representative and Kerry Covey as the Alternative for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Motion to appoint Bruce Pichet to serve as a Regional Transit Council Representative and Kyle Thornton as the Alternative for a term of one year. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to appoint Josh Webb to serve as 911 Coordinator for a term of one year.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Motion to hear nominations and appoint three representatives, two voting and one alternative to the OCW Board of Trustees.
I nominate Bruce. Nominate Tom. And Linda will be our alternate.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Should've spelt it out.
What you got for showing up, Linda?
Motion to hear nominations and appoint a tree warden for a term of one year.
Yeah, John used to do that, right?
Yeah, John Corrus was doing it. So if the Board didn't nominate someone new, he would continue.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Does he want to?
Well, that I don't know.
I think we did it because he was Public Works formal. So it makes sense to just appoint Kyle.
Yeah, and the Town of Proctor doesn't have a shave tree plan, so there's not a whole lot of authority that a tree warden has anyway. So, yeah, I think, you know, it doesn't carry a great deal workload responsibility. Kyle probably wouldn't balk at it.
Okay, unless there's one of the other guys that you think would want it? Do we have any tree experts on board?
You know, we do, actually. Nick worked for Valant Court, I believe, for a little while.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Should we table it and ask them? Sounds good.
We'll table that one in next meeting. Is there a motion to hear nominations and appoint a Cemetery Commissioner for a term of three consecutive years?
I nominate Linda Reiman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any opposition? All in favor? All right.
I'll give her a call.
Motion carries. Does she know?
No.
She did show interest.
She did.
And I talked to Celia about it a little bit today, and they don't mind doing the administrative work, but, yeah, it'd be helpful to have somebody go show them, show someone the plots when they're interested in purchasing one.
Yeah, it's gonna come to bite us if we don't get somebody on board here.
Hopefully, she's home, sitting by the phone, waiting for your call.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, so those are all the appointments. Is there any open public comment?
Let's go, Cheryl.
All right, hearing done. Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Operating permit.
The latest update on the ONM manual is that the state has transmitted to the town a copy of their edits, and it's a big file, and I've gotta update my Microsoft One account so that I can access it. But once I can, once I've accomplished that, we'll review the comments in-house. Hopefully, the Rural Water Association will help us answer them. And shortly after, the goal is to have an operating permit for the water system. And on top of that, in addition, just as a correction from our last meeting, I spoke to Celia once she returned to work about the schedule for disconnects. The town actually doesn't start disconnects till April, so we'll just adjust the timeline over back a month.
Did we get the information from DuBois and King yet?
They have not gotten the water model to me.
I was going to get ahold of Chuck. I will make a note to give him a buzz.
Anything else underwater?
That's it.
Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and into the Board of Sewer Commissioners? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Park pump station repair.
Yeah, the only big news in the world of wastewater is that during kind of the normal maintenance procedures, our operators noticed that the Park Street pump was making a funny noise, and it ended up being a bearing. They took it apart, re-greased everything, put it back together, and everything's operating normally now.
That's good.
Where is the Park Street pump?
Right here. Over here.
Oh, in the street. Oh, okay. Right on the same thing at first.
Oh, was that in Park Street?
I assumed, yeah, okay.
Pump in the park.
Park pump. You didn't say, you may have said street, but it says here park.
My apologies.
Yeah, I think there's still two pumps in there, just like the other.
Yeah, might be the case. Backup, one backup.
Yes.
I hope so.
And the storage, a lot of people don't realize that there's quite a storage thing in ground over there.
Yeah, tank. Yeah, the fire department uses it sometimes.
Huh?
The fire department has used it for training sometimes, haven't they?
No, this is an underground extra before it puts it into the four-shmain over to the library station.
I've always thought it had a nice blank brick wall for some art in the park or something.
Like a mural?
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Yeah. Maybe catch, catch feet.
All right, anything else under the sewer? Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewer Commissioners and into the Select Board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, department reports. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just kind of on the back burner, the town's here in the municipal building, we've been having problems with our phone lines, and we've reached out to a couple people on servicing them. So now we've kind of come up to the question of whether we want to refurbish the lines or purchase new ones. So, like I said, this is kind of an item we've got set on the back of the table, and as we kind of get through the months, get over town meeting, and get quite a few applications in for the various programs that we're a part of, and we'll go out for bids to get new phones. Class two, oh, that's in action discussion. So the South Street sidewalk update, the right-of-way plans are still under review by the state. Thankfully, we're about a month ahead of schedule with this project, and the right-of-way clearance certificates are not scheduled to be completed until June. And the town's already done a bunch of upfront work to make sure that we've got preapproval from the four landowners that we need for temporary construction easements. So I figure if the state gets back to us in a timely manner, then we can definitely get those construction easements done in a timely manner as well. Okay, so the Beaver Pond path update, I've included in your packets a cancellation letter that was drafted by myself and sent to the state following their suggestions, and a response is pending. So the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission had an excellent meeting a couple weeks ago. During the Energy Committee portion of it, the Town of Proctor hosted a roundtable. We had state officials here, we had a Rutland Regional Planning Commission rep, a GMP rep, efficiency Vermont representatives, and everybody just had really good feedback and questions that gave the Energy Committee a little bit more focus on what their mission and vision was. We were able to acquire a lot of pamphlets and swag, I guess you'd call it, and we handed it out at town meeting. So we've got a little bit left downstairs. I've got to find a table to set it all on. But aside from that, there is a $4,000 grant that is part of this energy resilience, it's called MERC Municipal Energy Resilience Program, and inside of MERC, there's gonna be three phases of grants, and we've gotten to the first phase, which is a $4,000 grant for outreach and educational opportunities that I believe the Planning Commission intends to take advantage of. Let's see here. A few people spoke to me about the transfer station and just wanting an update on what the transfer station permit is. And so I spoke to Mark Shea, who's the Director of the Rutland County Solid Waste District, and our transfer station permit does not expire until November of 2023. And he also stated that it's good that we're using it because it's one of those use it or lose it kind of things. And we're just, as November approaches, we'll make sure to work with the RCSWD to make sure that permit's renewed.
Did he happen to mention if that was a complicated thing or kind of a routine?
He always, whenever I mention it, you know, he kind of always acts like it's not the biggest hill to climb, and that they would, that part of RCSWD's job is to help us, help towns do their permit administration.
A few years back, we got some rough estimates on calls in the dump, and it was very expensive.
Yeah.
As long as we have a spring dump day down there, I think that'll help push the permit through, that we're actually using it and people are bringing things in.
Yeah, and Kyle and I are gonna meet next week, and we talked about, we're gonna break our workflow into months, I believe. This is gonna be my first construction season with Kyle, so we just want to kind of efficiently get work done and get a feel for each other's kind of method of workflow. So we'll probably take it month by month. And in April, you know, one of our goals definitely would be clean up the transfer station, prep it for May, and we're also trying to coordinate it with the RCSWD when they do their hazardous waste pickup day.
Yeah, we'll probably have to schedule a day, have it in the, on the agenda to...
Oh, for sure.
To coordinate with the hazardous waste day to...
And then lastly, I do have an addition here to my notes. Kyle is going out for bids with a company called Auction International, and you can look them up online. We're gonna test out their services since we've never used them before. The town, this is the funny thing about it, though, the town receives bids on the 28th, and our Select Board meeting is on the 27th. So Kyle and I were wondering if bids came out at a certain amount, I hope I'm not getting ahead of myself here on the agenda, I don't think I am, no. Kyle and I were wondering if it came in under a certain amount, if he and I could have authority to sell it. And we were looking at a number around 5,000. So if bids came back for the tool cat, over 5,000, if we had authority to just sell it for that much, or if the Board would prefer to look at the highest bid before we get rid of it.
I don't have an issue with it, no.
5,000 seems like the...
I think we'll be lucky to get that.
Kyle said, the guy that runs Auction International, he said he can get rid of those tool cats, you know, he said he's seen them so rusted, the door tries to fall off when you open it, and he can get over 5,000, so we'll see. And the way this company works is the town gets the full bid award, and then whoever wins the bid pays an extra 10%, pays a buyer's fee. So it's a really good service, and again, that is called, you know, we want this to be open for people in town as well, so the website, Auction International, they've got all kinds of stuff on there you can fill your backyard with, so...
Auction International?
Yeah. That concludes my manager's report.
Thank you. Any questions on the Sheriff's Report? Something I was looking at here, weird. I think there's just one day that was insanely busy, it seemed like. I did kind of question why, there are certain things that seem like they talked about, you know, doing things, and then there was four fines, but no money. I'm questioning why they fined somebody, there's no cost to it.
Followed up on that last time, so I'll make sure to do that.
Make sure it isn't the, I read it as four warnings. Yeah, it's warnings issued four, tickets issued zero, warnings issued four, fines zero, and arrests zero. I do that all the time. So it's tickets issued.
Okay, all right, I got it.
If you could mention, Michael, we like...
What? No. That was a couple, that was a few weeks ago.
Was one of those warnings here? Oh, that was in the previous Sheriff's Report.
I was questioning, why wasn't I fined? Okay, let's see. Everybody sign the bills?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, renewal of Village Center designation. We now need a motion to authorize a Village Center designation renewal application. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion carries. Class two highway application, West Street paving, if awarded. Is there a motion to authorize class two highway application?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
That is getting rough out. Spots out on the west road there, it's getting pretty rough.
That one spot right by Esther Cape and...
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So there was a motion?
Yeah.
All right, anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Traffic Alternative Program Grant. The state is requesting that all three towns maximize the grant match from $3,333 to $4,000 for the tri-town loop scoping study. Is there a motion to increase the Town of Proctor's match for the tri-town trail scoping study to $4,000 in equal partnership with Pittsford and West Rutland?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Special Town Meeting Warning. Review and approve the warning for voters to decide upon the Public Nuisance Ordinance amendments. Motion to approve the special town meeting warning as presented.
It should be, this topic should be here.
You want me to read the whole thing? This whole thing?
Yeah, you can read it, I don't mind reading it. Okay.
Getting choked up.
The special town meeting warning, the legal voters of the Town of Proctor are hereby warned to meet at the Proctor Free Library Community Room at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, April 19, 2023, to transact the following business by floor vote. Article 1, shall the voters disapprove amendments to Proctor's Public Nuisance Ordinance as adopted by the Select Board on January 23, 2023, which provide as follows. Section 2, G7, the keeping of livestock, including swine, hogs, cattle, horses, fowl, and other animals on property in any manner that constitutes a public health hazard, or in a manner that constitutes a public health hazard, oh, I repeated that, or in a manner that does not comply with conditions for keeping certain animals as stated in Section 3. Moving on to Section 3, conditions for keeping certain animals. A, nonconformity with the provisions and conditions listed herein after regarding the harboring or keeping of animals within town limits shall constitute a public nuisance. One, harboring or raising of livestock is prohibited, including but not limited to horses, cattle, sheep, swine, hogs, or fur-bearing animals without the written approval of all owners owning property within 100 yards of the premises on which the livestock is being kept. Two, no livestock, swine, or hogs shall be kept within 100 feet of any residence, dwelling house, or street. Livestock pens and yards must be kept deodorized by application of dry muck, dry earth, or some other effective absorbent or disinfectant, provided nevertheless that no person, persons, firm, partnership, corporation, or other legal entity shall keep or maintain more than four swine or hogs within the limits of the city. Three, no fowl or chickens shall be kept on property in such a manner as to cause a public nuisance, and the buildings and yards shall be kept deodorized by the application of dry earth or some other effective absorbent or disinfectant. All fowl and chickens kept within the town limits shall be confined in an enclosure and shall be permitted and shall not be permitted to run at large. No more than 12 fowl or chickens may be harbored on a single premises. Four, it is prohibited for any person to own, possess, or harbor a rooster within town limits. Five, no more than four cats or dogs over six months shall be harbored or kept on a property or premises. And six, required agricultural practices as defined in 24 DSA subsection 4413D shall not constitute a public nuisance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the special town meeting warning as presented? Any discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Bruce?
Yeah, I think, I just...
You mean, I guess it's...
I don't think we have a choice.
Is it the wording, is it the wording, or what are you opposing?
Ma'am?
I mean, the way we rewrote, rewrote it, and where we did, it was being petitioned, and they got a petition, so we have to have a meeting to vote on it. So the only thing that we could really disagree with is the wording of this special meeting warning.
Okay, I'm gonna change mine to just, I'm not gonna vote on it. I'll abstain.
I mean, it's my understanding that you could still have livestock at certain limits as long as you abide by the rules, correct?
Well, this is, so we passed these new rules as part of the nuisance ordinance, and this is to remove these from the nuisance ordinance. So the differences are that roosters are already prohibited through zoning, but we added it to the ordinance, and that chickens have to be kept enclosed, which is new. That would be removed from the ordinance if this passes at town meeting.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, okay, no, then I'm misunderstanding.
So I just want to be clear, I made the motion only because, as far as I understand, we have to. I mean, the petition has been approved, we have to approve some sort of warning. I don't agree with this, what's in this warning, but it's, at this point, it's up to the town.
Yeah, I suppose we're gonna have to have the vote on it.
I mean, by statute, because enough signatures were provided, we have to have this meeting.
Okay, so those are, Ben made the motion, so how many in favor of it? Is there a second? Linda seconded it. All in favor? Say aye.
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 I don't like it.
I, it's still not clear in my head what I'm doing here, as far as...
So what we're doing is basically just, we have to, once a petition's filed and they have the correct number of people who've signed it, we have to have a special meeting to address that petition. So we have to have this meeting, so we can't vote not to have it.
We're just approving the warning, that's all.
Okay, so it's just approving the meeting.
What he read is what we're approving.
Which is...
A warning to vote on.
Okay, so it's just to vote on...
Vote on having it. Okay, so...
Because what would, what would be the alternate if you didn't?
Well, yeah, we're...
I mean, statute says once a petition is submitted with, is it 5% or 10? I think it's 5%.
5%.
Which has been done, then we have to schedule a meeting.
Signatures on it, so you gotta...
We have 60 days.
Gotta do the meeting.
Yeah, so, so there's no choice, really.
It's more of a resolution than a motion. It's more of a resolution than a motion, but they can be interchangeable, I think.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
And you're opposed?
I'm going to abstain, yeah. I'm not going to vote.
All right. Hey, motion carries. Green Mountain Power Settlement Update. Town attorney's working out final details of the agreement with Green Mountain Power. Adoption of a dog bite vicious dog hearing procedures. Is there a motion to adopt dog bite vicious dog hearing procedures as presented? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, Otter Creek Watershed Membership. Is there a motion to petition the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District for membership?
Remind.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Were you okay with that letter they suggested, Judy?
I didn't see it, yeah.
I apologize, it's here.
We've got a lot...
I knew we said he was going to have one, so...
Yeah, we've got a lot to sign. It's short.
Short, to the point. All right. Okay. New business, anything else on that? Did anybody have discussion? All right, new business for discussion, Rutland County Solid Waste District Outreach Plan. So they want the board to hold a special meeting on April 17th, 2023. That's the only date that they offered that's available for them.
Yeah. I tried to, tried to get it on a select board meeting, and because of the grant, they have to meet with the board, is what I was told. I'm sure that, you know, you just have to have a majority, so those interested in it would be here.
All right. And Proctor Summer Camp, everybody got the little flyer here? So the Parks and Rec Committee wants to host a summer camp, and it's kind of to help out with the lack of tapestry being around and just to kind of bring, get to the, to the rink and pool and stuff, and offer room to students.
That's great.
The school is having a summer program, they're just going to want a contract to look tapestry, so I think there might be some misinformation going around.
Yeah. Well, I think it's because they always relied on tapestry, and now that tapestry's gone, they figured there's no program for them, so...
Well, I mean, a letter went out to all parents, anyone enrolled in school, so all those with children that would be attending camp received that information, and it's also been, those letters more than once, so...
Okay. So anybody have any questions on this?
So this is school age, like kindergarten?
Kids going into first grade through sixth grade.
This is a change, so we'll check, make sure it's okay with our insurance company.
Yeah, I reached out to Randolph Vermont today, and they weren't required, they go through passive as well, they weren't required to get any special insurance since they have townwide coverage, however, they do have quite a bit of waiver forms that have been created.
I think it'll be the same as any other thing that they hold there, you know?
Well, and then maybe anybody who's helping out, you know, you want to do background checks on.
Right, right.
We still have to work out the logistics of the money and all that, but doesn't seem to be insurmountable to figure out how to do it successfully.
Okay. Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.